Okay. Let's call the city council meeting for August 18th to order, please. Could I have a roll call?
Mayor Delaney.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Swanson.
Here.
And Councilmember Colback.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approval of the agenda, and there are some changes to our agenda. We need to, uh, under new business, item A, Resolution 2025-49 had a typo. So the word northwest should be changed to northeast. And we do have an updated, uh, resolution there, but just to point that out. And then also we'll need to, uh, approve the, uh, changes on the minutes. There was a error there also, so. We'll get to that during the consent agenda. I would recommend, uh, approval of the agenda with the change under new business item A.
So move second.
Okay, now just a second here. That's the only change I can have. Oh yeah, then we want to also, we have a motion on the floor in second, but we also want to, uh, delete, approve the stormwater agreement. We want to remove that under item H. We didn't get further information on that, so if we could amend that motion, I would recommend that.
I'll, uh, end that motion to include the last item.
Removal of H. Okay.
Second.
All right, this has been moved in seconded. Any other discussion comments? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and motion carries. Thank you. Consent agenda. The consent agenda contains the following items for approval: the August 4th, 2025 special meeting minutes, August 4th, 2025 regular meeting minutes, August 11th, 2025 special meeting minutes. And we would have a change there too, where Scott Swanson was at the special meeting and his inadvertently missed in the minutes. We change that. And payment of claims, listing bills, and the July financial reports. Entertain a motion.
Right, second.
Moved in seconded. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries. Any community concerns still?
No, we just ended.
Okay. Legal. Introduction of Ordinance 168, fourth series, and ordinance of the City of Pipestone repealing and replacing Section 153.32 of the Pipestone City Code with regards to signs. And I'll introduce that ordinance at this time. Resolution 2025-49, this is a resolution of the City of Pipestone to support the U.S. Economic Development Administration's fiscal year 2025 disaster supplemental grant program, and pledging a local match to expand infrastructure along 11th Street northeast for the development of an industrial park. Council heard a presentation on the North Iowa Development Project from the SRDC on August 4th. And this resolution, if approved, would allow the city to move forward with the grant application and project and reaffirm that the city will be responsible for providing the local match for the project if the grant is awarded. Entertain a motion.
Let's go move.
It's been moved in seconded. Any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and motion carries. Okay. Resolution 2025-50, this resolution authorizes the city to enter into the Safe Routes to Schools Grant Agreement with the Min dot and will also allow city designees to fully execute the grant agreement. I thought we had done that at one time, but, uh, this is a formal, uh, agreement, resolution. Okay.
This approves it formally and so we can proceed.
All right. Entertain a motion.
I'll move, uh, Resolution 2025-15.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, and motion carries. Resolution 2025-51, this resolution accepts a donation from Buckwheat LLP in the amount of $1,000 to be used for the Farmer's Market Senior Pops Program. And entertain a motion to accept that donation.
So move. Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Questions, comments? Thank you for the donation, and all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries. Resolution 2025-52, on August 4th, the city received the following bids for the 2025 Safe Routes to Schools Project. It is being recommended by the city engineer to approve the low bid from the Holstein Excavating in the amount of $856,946.15. And is Travis available?
Travis, you're.
I'm here.
Okay. Oh, there you are. All right. Uh, any comments Travis on that?
The bids were within reason with the estimate provided. Um, we've reviewed them and we believe that Holstein Excavating is the lowest responsible contractor and recommend award. Construction could commence this fall, or it would, uh, if they decide they, they can wait till spring and get the work done. But regardless, we're within the parameters of the grant agreements, um, to get the work done, um, next summer.
Okay, all right.
I, I move, uh, we do Resolution 2025-15.
I'll second that.
It's been moved in seconded. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and motion carries. Accept the 2024 audit and proposed and posted journal entries. On August 11th, the council heard a presentation from Matt Talbert with Mullinbrook Talbert and Company, TLLP. Motion now needs to be made to approve the 2024 audit report and recommended posted journal entries into the approval being retroactive to August 15th, 2025, which was the deadline for submitting the audit report. So entertain a motion.
I'll move to accept that 2024 audit and posted journal entries.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Is there any other questions, comments? And I'd just like to thank, uh, Matt Talbert with Mullinbrook Talbert and Company. Uh, did a great job again this year with the audit process and, uh, he explains things very clearly to the council and has a good presentation and, uh, we certainly, uh, wo- work with the, uh, the local, uh, businesses like Talbert and Mullinbrook and, uh, we're certainly glad they're available for our help, so. Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries. We have a new firefighter, uh, coming up and requesting a council approval for Dylan's place. And, uh, recommend a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
It's been moved in seconded. Any questions, comments? That comes from Fire Chief Michael Blumenthal requesting this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries. Approve the utility easements. And let's see. As a result of sewer and water insulation project near the areas of Highway 23 North, the following utility easements need to be approved with the condition, the easements include all signatures and full legal description. Everybody's prayer be recorded by this, we record his office. And there was a utility easement made by Nutrien Egg Solution, the utility easement made by Michael B. Crawford and Ladonna K. Crawford, utility easement made by Chandler Feed Company, utility easement made by Danny Delaney and Linda's Delaney, the utility easement made by Carolyn Rasmussen. And this was to, uh, complete the project for, uh, sewer at, uh, K and J, and also Nutrien across the highway.
I'll make a motion to approve the easements.
Second.
And just, just to point it out that this is just, uh, legalities and, uh, there's no renomination or anything, but I am going abstain since I did have property in that area that we allowed easements. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and motion carries. Okay. Approve the full-time status for accounts payable position. In the following a three-month probationary period, Administrator Nelson is recommending Ashley Weeds move to full-time status as a accounts payable clerk, administrative assistant effective August 18th, 2025. Entertain a motion.
So move. Second.
Moved in seconded. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries. And with that, approve full-time status for administrative assistant position. Megan DeWitt was hired in June as a temporary full-time employee to fill the role of administrative assistant. And she is now recommending that the council move Megan to a full-time status as administrative assistant effective August 18th, 2025.
So move.
Okay, moved in seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Carries. And two very good employees that we're glad to have here in Pipestone, so.
They're doing very well.
Very good, thank you. Food trucks parking location, and, uh, we had a discussion at a Human Rights Commission meeting. And the idea came up that it would be nice if Pipestone designated an area for food trucks. Um, people can't find them occasionally, or they're in town and they don't know they're there, and, uh, so it was just kind of a, a general thought. Maybe a designated area for them. We certainly don't want to limit them to any area. But, uh, if we were able to have a designated area for food trucks, um, they might be easier to locate for the people that are interested in, in that service. And, uh, so I just put it on the agenda for discussion.
How much room do you think? How many trucks are there in the, right now in the city? I know there's a few coming in from outlying areas, you see.
Yeah.
Occasionally.
I can think of, uh, five different food trucks that I've came across that come into Pipestone occasionally. And, uh, um, you know, there could be more.
We currently have nine licensed.
We have nine licensed, okay. All right.
So you need room.
Well.
Approximately for, could be up to nine right now.
Well, yeah, not necessarily. I think we gotta work with what we got. And, uh, you know, if we have some designated areas available that, uh, we're not, we're not planning on extending the 21-day permitting process. It isn't a permanent location. It would still be a daily food truck, uh, but it would just be an area where people could look first if they're looking for a food truck or versus just driving around town hoping to find one at, uh, you know, a parking lot somewhere. But, um, I don't know what's a good spot for something like that.
Somewhat centrally located.
Yeah.
Where you could, I mean, cause you got, you know, like I'm just thinking major employers, you know, like the hospital at the end of town, and you get like, right still helping farmers on the other end of town.
Mm-hmm.
You got, uh, Trust Pro is out there and you, there's, you know, some of the implement dealers and, you know, employ a lot of people. I'm just, you know.
Do we allow food trucks to park on the street?
Well, under city code, Title 10 or 11 Business Regulations, 11011, under the canvasser peddlers and transient merchant license use of streets. No licensee shall have any exclusive right to any location in the public streets. Nor shall any be permitted a stationary location thereon, so.
But they can use the street if they so desire.
You know, you have an issue.
Nor any be permitted to operate in a congested area where such operation might impede or inconvenience the public use of such streets.
Okay.
We did have an issue with the monkey ice cream truck. They wanted to park at the Harmon Park, which would, wasn't allowed to park in any of the, like by the, on the street in front of the, especially by the pool because then that would take away the sales from the concession stand at the pool. This has been here since we've done, um, Federalist Canvases and Transient Merchant License. They shall not be permitted a stationary location. So I, I'm just bringing this to your attention. This discussion purpose is only so. I'm just letting you know this is in the code book.
We had an issue with, uh, on North Iowa during this SAKR events that wasn't one of the trucks parking on the street and people were crossing.
And they're crossing the street, so then they got on to that. But then there was people hooking food in their homes and going in and selling it out of fullers, and you can't do that either.
No, that's another whole issue.
That's another whole issue.
Yeah.
As well.
But, you know, I, I think the food trucks in the long run are a good thing.
Oh, absolutely.
And, uh, I just thought, well, here, this came up at a committee, commission meeting. And it was a concerned citizen that, uh, brought it up. And I thought, well, let's just bring it up at the council level and talk about it if there's anything we can do to make it easier for people to find these food trucks when they want to use them.
And I'm just, I'm just gonna ask, I don't know. Like, are some of these places where they're parking now, are they charging them rent, or?
Some have, and I know in the past, they were, they have fish and chips, they did have to pay rent using them for, when they were in their parking lot.
Like by the motel there.
Do they now, I don't.
Someone parked by, uh, the laundromat too.
Right. They were, they've had to pay rent in, in some of the parking lots. Do they now? I thought, I do not know that's between them and it's a private?
Yeah.
Private business.
Well, we did allow the parking lot here at City Hall to be used for a farmer's market. And I don't know what's the difference if we would allow a food truck to park in there occasionally. I don't know.
Well, would they?
Is that an option?
Would there be room like during business?
And then, right.
Hours.
Cause they're, we're limited to space there too. And if you have three or four food trucks there, um, that's gonna cut up a lot of parking area, so. I, I don't know.
I'm not sure what the city would have for property that's gonna be a more viable spot than what they're using right now on the highways. You know, for passerbys and whatnot. Cause we don't own any properties along the highways.
Large enough property.
Also for visibility for other people.
75.
North on 75, like we're at the, uh, dog park area. Yeah. I don't know. That's a, you know, we could designate that area. If the food truck vendors choose to use it or not, that's their decision. We're certainly not saying, hey, you have to be parked here. You know, I, I, I don't advocate that at all. I'm just saying, here's another option where people can find you easier maybe if, um, you're interested in it.
Maybe we should reach out to the vendors and ask them what they think of this idea and, you know, would they be interested and where, if they have an idea where it down would be best, where it could be a good place to park.
But they do, you know, they do notify people. It's on Facebook where they're gonna be.
Yeah, that's true.
Facebook where they're gonna be. I'm just saying that this is in the code book and I, you know, Jason probably should do some research for us too, because as you can see with this memo stuff put together that, you know, there are state rules through the, the state 21 days, if it's more than 21 days, you know, there's.
Oh, right.
There's rules there too, so.
I don't, I don't think anybody's advocating changing anything like that. Southwest Health and Human Services
Right.
actually, uh, issued the permitting for the, the, uh, food trucks. And, uh, you don't want them parked in a certain area permanently because of health reasons. And, uh, so I think that's, it's good that they do move around. Um, just that we want to get, be part of the, uh, rotation if possible, if there was an area that would work. You know, we certainly would, uh, want to see them utilize that, so. But just something for discussion at this point, and, uh, I, I know the fire hall parking area on the north, uh, or on the southwest corner was, uh, discussed as an open area.
I don't know.
And that would be, you know, limited to one, maybe, maybe two. But you wouldn't want to have anything blocking anything there as far as emergency vehicles.
Why, and the fire department uses that for parking when they have fire calls also.
I don't, yeah.
And besides that, you want one congestion in that area if you had a fire call, then.
Right. Are you talking in the parking lot, they were thinking, Dan, of the fire wall or on the street?
No, that parking lot area or that street area, yeah. Right near where the old, uh, True Value used to be.
South of the fire wall, you mean?
Yeah.
Or Manhattan Street there.
South and west to that building. There's quite a bit of.
They've got a truck, they've got a truck that comes out the door on that side.
Yeah, but there's quite a bit of room there if you go up against that curb, but, um, just, again, that's just open for discussion and, uh, something to think about, and maybe somebody will come up with a better idea. Um, but, uh, again, just brought it up because it was brought up at a commission meeting and through, uh, community concerns.
I think the best, you know, if, uh, can't just, uh, those people that are, who are in the food trucks and see where they think it, a good spot would be.
Yeah. I, I think where you're, you're talking about too, that wouldn't be all bad, but it's, you know, if it's designated, so people know to look there, that, that's, you know, but if you were just randomly parking occasionally, yeah. It's, unless you're on Facebook, that's the only way to figure out what's going on, I guess, in today's world, so.
If you're looking, if you'd like us to, if you want us to look into this more, you wish.
Well, cause it was brought up by concerned citizens, so let's look into it and see what's available and see if there's any interest in doing anything, so.
We'll do that.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Yes, go right ahead.
Um, just to say, kind of generally, the way those are handled is you have kind of code provisions. And you require all the logistics they need to get from the state. And also kind of a special event permit, uh, from the city. Uh, I don't want to make more work for staff, but this is kind of. Also standards in there that not only has a designation of where they go, you have density requirements and distance requirements. You know, distances from, you know, certain structures and and you can only have so many within, you know, right, you can't, you have plenty of them parked right next to each other.
Right.
You can have those kind of requirements as well. So just throw that out there, that's the way I've generally seen it. Is, you know, having those kind of density requirements that makes it safer and, you know, maybe you don't have to visit me where it's gonna be. But also have that permit that city knows about it and you can make sure they're gonna be complying with what you require.
Okay, all right. Those are good thoughts, so.
Thanks.
Good. Thank you, Jason.
Yep.
Review of the Purdue Pharma settlement communications, and again, we'll turn this over to our city attorney, Jason Hill. He has a presentation for us.
So the, um, we got, the city got a letter, I believe it's in the package, uh, from Blue Cross Blue Shield on part of the kind of recently approved, uh, kind of finally approved, Purdue Pharma, kind of big settlement. And, um, the city of Pipestone, from what I've seen, is not included in the kind of larger settlement that was negotiated through the city's office. There, that is largely, I know Pipestone County is in there. Uh, but it's largely only in larger cities, larger, you know, law enforcement presence um, that's involved in that one. Uh, I was able to communicate with the league of the local cities and kind of through them, was supposed to the Attorney General's Office, that this portion from Blue Cross Blue Shield is third-party vendors who are, were part of that settlement with Purdue, specifically Purdue, uh, cause there's been a number of other settlements. But specifically that one, and that it would relate to services provided in, you know, maybe, you know, premiums paid by the city to Blue Cross Blue Shield is part of that. Uh, I don't know where, how that would follow money-wise or how much, you know, seeing what timeframe the city was involved. The, they kind of confirmed, this is again, this is kind of coming from the city's office. Uh, what Blue Cross Blue Shield requested in this letter is that potentially they can speak out the app of the city. And the, and especially because they are the ones that are party to the settlement, not the city. But there is an opt-out option, and that's why I kind of wanted to get this on the agenda. The opt-out option is, uh, the end of this month. Like most of these, it makes no sense to opt out. You know, so I just wanted to kind of have the council take some formal action. Uh, my recommendation is that we don't opt out. Uh, but I also wanted to confirm that would be okay for, cause what Blue Cross Blue Shield is gonna do is both to approve the settlement, which is what everybody's doing and what the state is recommending. So I'm okay also, cause in there in the letter, you'll see it says, if, if you do, if you're okay with that, if you're not gonna opt out and you're okay with it in favor of the settlement, then you don't have to do anything. And Blue Cross Blue Shield will handle it, and then we'll just see when they crunch the numbers if the city ends up whipping it out of it, but, though that's kind of the, showing a picture of this, it's not the kind of larger part of the settlement that was kind of really in the news a lot, that the Attorney General's Office had worked through. With all of that, those funds are going through the state uh, and then down to the counties and cities. Um, this is, this, this is a different one involving a third-party vendor and insurer like Blue Cross Blue Shield. But again, like I say, I've communicated with both league and the Attorney General's Office and it's, you know, we're kind of good to go on this one. So what I would recommend, um, is that we don't opt out, and I recommend that we don't opt out, and that we approve Blue Cross Blue Shield voting in favor of the settlement. So the, you can do that in one motion, uh, if the council's okay with that. But that would be my recommendation.
Okay. Any questions, comments on that? So it entertained a motion, um, to not opt out. And yep, if you want to help with the wording on that, to allow Blue Cross and Blue Shield
Well, I'm on our behalf.
Proceed on our behalf. I would so move that at this time.
I'll second that.
Been moved in seconded. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and motion carries. Closing comments. Any closing comments from, go ahead, Verdine.
August 25th. Wheels behind bad blood drive here in town. Um, I think that's, that's a hospital. Give some blood.
Yeah, yeah, good. What do we got going on tomorrow at the Performing Arts Center? There's, uh, something going on Wednesday, the 20th. No, it's not tomorrow, it's Wednesday, the 20th. And that is the Puppy Pals, uh, presentation. And, uh, that's a family-oriented, uh, um, show involving rescue dogs and, uh, doing tricks and comedian acts and things like that, so something to check out. If you haven't been to the Performing Arts Center lately, you're missing out on a lot and you should definitely check it out. And that would be Wednesday evening. It's open to the whole family. Um, also during closing comments, I want to point out that, uh, I just got, received this in the mail today. Postcards are being sent out, and that's from, for a select number of residents, letting them know that the city assessors will be by to do a property valuation, which is required once every five years. And that's by state statute, so if anyone has any questions, the city assessor has contact information listed on the bottom of the postcard. You can certainly contact them there. You can contact City Hall if you don't understand, but, uh, there'll be, uh, assessors coming out to select residents and businesses in the next few weeks, uh, to conduct that, uh, onsite, uh, assessment. Then also for closing comments, I- Then also for closing comments, I had, uh, city staff became aware through a public notice that the Pipestone County Board of Adjustments has scheduled a hearing for Thursday, August 28th at 5:30 PM. The hearing will consider a variance by Pivot Energy Minnesota Solar 24 LLC, and that's Jerry Raymond Trust, to construct a solar garden at less than the required 400-foot setback from the nearest non-participating dwelling. The city has received concerns from residents living south of the proposed project. In addition, given the site's proximity to the residential district, there is concern that this development could limit opportunities for future residential expansion. An important consideration since available land for growth is limited. According to the city's comprehensive plan, the site lies within neighborhood four where the stated goal is to increase the overall housing stock. For this reason, city staff plan to submit a letter of opposition to the variance request and will be attending the public hearing. So just putting that out there, that that's the city's position on this. And, uh, we'll see how it takes place. Go from there. Any other, uh, closing comments from anyone? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries and we are adjourned. Thank you.